Roll call for the city council meeting of Wednesday, November 16th at 7:30 PM. Ms. Allen, Mr. Brzezinski, Ms. Flores, Mr. Keys, Mr. Nelson, Mr. Troop, Mr. Witherspoon.
We're going to stand for a moment of silence and reflection, and we have a couple of people and a couple of observances we want to remember. Jasmine is going to speak about Indigenous Peoples' Month. Mel is going to mention Paris Baker, who's been a dear friend and has been key to the Diversity Equity and Inclusion Report we're going to hear about. And thank you to Ed Brzezinski for reminding me that tomorrow, the mayor's press conference will be about Children's Grief Day. So, we've had a lot of grief in our community in recent months. We've had it in our state. We've had it nationwide. So, for every child who is grieving, for every parent who is grieving, we are thinking about them. Mel, would you say a few words about Paris and why we want to keep him in our thoughts and prayers?
I'd like to have the entire city pray for Professor Baker, who's a leader in our community, a professor in education, and a minister as well. He's bedridden right now, preparing for surgery. Keep him in his prayers, please.
And Jasmine?
I just wanted to take a moment to honor Indigenous people and communities. Each November, Native American Heritage Month starts, and we did not, at the first council member, I mean council meeting of the month, acknowledge them. So, I just wanted to make our acknowledgement. I also wanted to tell the Erie community, learn what native land you are on. Erie County derives its name from the Eris Indians who settled on the fertile lake shore in the mid-1600s. The Eris tribe was conquered and destroyed by the Erych Confederacy. The Native American people are a resilient people, and they're the first people of this land. And as a resilient people, they thrive today within our communities and on reservations. So, let's just make sure that we're inclusive of all of our community members. Thank you.
Thank you. And Michael?
Moment of silence, please, for all those who were mentioned, Dr. Baker, and the Indigenous people whose land that we stand on now. Dear Heavenly Father, we come before you, first of all, thankful and grateful that you have assembled us today. O Lord, we ask that by the power of your Spirit and by your might that we make good and prudent decisions on the behalf of the city and the city residents. We'd just like to also, as we go into the holidays, remember those who are less fortunate, and to help the city be a beacon to those people, and that they may receive everything that they need going into this season. Amen.
Thank you. Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, the United Republic of which it stands, and my devotion unto God, and to the love, with liberty, and justice for all.
Before we do the DEI report, do we have anybody here from the Youth Leadership Institute? They may have been deterred by the snow, so I think we can move right on to the DEI report. Thank you.
I have a motion to accept the minutes-
Oh, sorry.
-from the November 2nd, 2022, city council meeting, and bills for payment on November 18th, 25th, and December 2nd. Mr. Brzezinski, Ms. Flores, Mr. Keys, Mr. Nelson, Mr. Troop, Mr. Witherspoon, Ms. Allen.
I always forget that. Okay, now, DEI report.
Good evening, City Council Mayor. Thank you so much for the opportunity to be here. My name is Monica Gould. I am the president of Strategic Consulting Partners, and we were hired by the city of Erie to provide a DEI, a Diversity Equity Inclusion Study. And we have completed our study, and we are sharing our findings with you today. Okay, so the first slide just shows you the team that we assembled to put together this study. We've worked over the last year. We started the program and the study in January, and we are in the final draft of the report, which will be delivered tomorrow. Heather? Okay, so one of the things, I think that you, okay, one of the things that we did is we spent a great deal of time collecting data associated with what the city was doing internally and externally to understand where the city had opportunities to improve their diversity, equity, inclusion initiatives. And through that data collection process, we interviewed folks internally and externally. We did focus groups internally. We launched a survey with city personnel, and we conducted several different interviews and assessments of the different systems and processes within city government. And with those findings, we were able to identify some critical key strengths that the city has going for it. So, first and foremost, the Mayor Schember has been a champion of DEI for the city. City Council has been a champion for DEI and has really helped to move some of these initiatives forward. And if you see some of the critical strengths that we have noted here, is the new HR director has really worked tirelessly to develop some great DEI initiatives. And the city has also utilized the ARP funds and other funds to fund some DEI initiatives across the city. Yeah, so if we look at some of the accomplishments that have been done already with respect to DEI, a lot of these are externally facing, and they're awesome, awesome work with respect to the American Rescue Fund money, $20 million for economic development, $15 million for housing, $8 million to improve parks, lots of collaboration with municipal partners, which included lots of not only funding, but different efforts to improve DEI within the city. Next slide, please. When we looked at the internal operations of the city, we saw that there were a lot of things underway. However, there were a lot of recommendations and areas of improvement that we have identified. And with that, we identified five critical areas that we think the city should really invest in and consider doing. The first is developing an action team internally within the city that would include the mayor, the chief of staff, and critical department heads, and be bringing in feedback from stakeholders externally and internally to the city. As it relates to that, we also suggested that this action team develop a framework in which all good DEI decisions are made, and that there's a strategic approach to developing and implementing any DEI initiatives. So, that includes looking at budgetary elements. It includes looking at what those high priorities could be, and what the high-impact, low-cost elements could be first and foremost. Secondly, we recommended that a diversity coordinator be hired within the city in the HR department. The HR department currently is fairly understaffed to do all of these initiatives, and really understaffed just to do general HR operations. So, this diversity coordinator is an HR generalist that will be supporting hiring practices, looking at pay equity, looking at job descriptions, promotion policies, all of those DEI initiatives related to HR and human resource development of your current staff. The third piece was really developing this framework, and that framework is going to be run through the DEI action team. The fourth, and also a very critical priority that we've identified, is creating a communications department. We recognize that through our interviews and through our conversations, both internally and externally, some of the good work that the city of Erie is doing, especially with respect to DEI, is not necessarily widely known. We also recognize that communication often has been reactive instead of proactive, and that incorporating a communications department will ensure that the messaging, both internally and externally, is consistent. But it'll also be a great opportunity for the community liaisons and others that are interacting with the public to hear the public's voice and bringing it collectively, so that strategically, the communications and those issues and initiatives can be addressed operationally, internally, within the city, but also externally. So, we think the communications department will really be very helpful in moving the city forward. And last, on the high priority list, is really looking at the way the city is doing contracting, and looking at it in a more holistic way. Article 127 is an article that has been in contention and is an ordinance that was created by the city many years ago, and is very outdated. And when we look at Article 127, it's very narrowly focused on ensuring that there are contractors that are receiving city bids and city work. However, there's a lot of work that needs to be done before that contract is let, and that includes mentoring small businesses. It includes bringing tradespeople along. It includes investing and training local folks to become contractors within the city. So, there's a little bit of work to do yet for the city in this regard, but looking at contracting in a more holistic manner will certainly take them a lot further, take all of you a lot further with respect to city contracting. So, the image to your right is an exhibit of what that management framework would look like, and all future decisions, as they start to come up and bubble up, because you're just beginning your DEI work. And this assessment uncovered 53 items that we identified as critical items to address, but there are certainly other items that will be uncovered as you start to dig in and you start to work through this DEI action team. So, creating a framework and a mechanism and a governance structure in which the city can take all of these DEI ideas and initiatives through will be very helpful. Okay, next slide. Okay, our next steps in the process are completing the report, which is being finalized as we speak, and begin action planning, is actually working within the city and working, you know, within this action team to begin to prioritize specifically what's going to happen, when, and then hold the city and, you know, the team members that are responsible for those actions accountable. So, that's all I have to report today. I don't know if you have any questions?
Does council have any questions? We had the opportunity to kind of grill Monica for almost an hour at our caucus session. I want to thank you. I want to thank Michael Outlaw, thank the mayor, thank Ed Betza for contributing your thoughts and leadership on getting us to this point. I think my question would be, I'm sure that the public will want to know, when can they take a look at this? When that draft is final, will this be available online for everybody to read? And what do you think?
I guess that's me. Once council receives and accepts the document, it becomes a public record.
Okay. And Monica, if you could just kind of just real quickly reiterate that you did talk to a lot of, what do we call stakeholders?
Yes.
That this is focusing on internal practices, but that it will have a really good ripple effect outside the building, too.
Absolutely. So, the purpose of the study was really to look at the internal operations and see how DEI is actually enacted within the city, to look at hiring practices, to look at promotion practices, to look at, you know, pay, to look at how people actually feel within the city and from a culture standpoint, or do they feel included? Do they feel welcome? So, we, you know, took a lot of time talking to internal stakeholders through focus groups and surveys, but we also did speak to many external stakeholder groups to get, you know, an inclination from them as to what the city, how the city is perceived, how some of these practices are impacting residents, and potentially how we could restructure city systems and policies to allow people to feel more included, to open up job opportunities for minorities and women, and to provide a more equitable and inclusive environment in which people can work.
Thank you very much. Michael, did you want to add anything? Okay, just Michael.
Yeah, so I just wanted to, first of all, thank you publicly for your work.
Thank you, Mr. Keys.
You did an excellent job, and I know you said that your work concludes tomorrow, but I would hope that the city leaves the door open to your company for consulting, because now we have to do the work. And I think that that's where it really, your experience may be most invaluable to how do we get from A, B, C to the desired goal. And so, I don't know if there's even been any talks about that, but I would hope that that would be the situation.
Mr. Keys, it would be our great pleasure and honor to support the city on an ongoing basis in whatever capacity you need us. So, we are here, 28 years in business in Pennsylvanian, and a minority woman-owned business owner myself. So, I appreciate all the work that you all are doing, and thank you. I applaud you for all the good work that you will continue to do as a city council and administration. We appreciate it. Thank you.
Madam President, I'd just like to tag on Councilman Keys, maybe wrapping up a portion tomorrow, but don't forget, we got your phone number.
You do?
All right.
And my business card. Thank you, sir. Anything else?
Thank you.
All right. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Okay, Lori, now we have asked for a repository sales, correct?
Yep.
Is there anyone here to speak on a repository sale? Anyone here to speak on a repository sale? Anyone to speak on a repository sale? This is public comments now. If you'd like to come up and please speak clearly, state your name and address for the record.
Good evening. My name is Kathleen Schaaf. I live at 2437 East 43rd Street, Erie, Pennsylvania. I just want to have some of my musings from my head and heart to go out to you. And my foremost thing is, it was so nice to see Mayor Joe at Erie Plymouth this afternoon after work. Noah Wilcox from the Public Works Maintenance is going to go into the Marine Corps, so that's a wonderful opportunity for him, and he will be greatly missed. I got to know him when I was on council and things, and he's a really hard worker. So, definitely need to replace him. I noticed that we still don't have a financial director, and I would consider telling you, with my experience of being the finance chair for two years when I was on council, that Lisa Gomersall was almost at every single meeting I ever was at with our former director, Paul. So, I am very active in listening to your meetings, and I've been listening to your budget sessions, and I would definitely recommend Lisa Gomersall to fulfill that position. She has had over 30 years of experience. She's a CPA, and why not hire within? She is an excellent resource, and I think she's doing a great job. We don't always have to go outside the box to get qualified people. I also want to be thankful this Thanksgiving. Frank Stumela is really on top of things. I get most of my information from the media, and he has every single meeting that's on. I watch redevelopment. I watch blighted property. I watch historic. And it's not just like on my computer. I'm at home, like while my cooking is cooking, I'm listening to things. So, he has definitely used his degree in communications and media studies, his degree in broadcast journalism, and his minor in media analysis and digital awareness. He really is a guy on the go. So, I want to be thankful for, you know, the people that we have. Every person here, I've just, I really think you, as a council, you know how it's like Take Your Daughter to Work Day? You should have all of you go in the trenches, because I think if you were in the trenches, you wouldn't have raised the parking so high. You would not believe the people who come in and are just absolutely besides themselves. They have told me they are switching their professional businesses, doctors, dentists, and things. They don't want to come down, because sometimes that app doesn't work. They are completely upset- They are completely upset about the $15 to $30. And I know, you know, you've said in a long time, but did you really talk to the girls who were in the parking ticket girls? I mean, and then the same with the code. There was a meeting yesterday, Councilman Nelson. That was an excellent meeting, by the way. And I really think, you know, code enforcement, you know, they can definitely, need more people there too. And there's just so much to be proud of in Erie City Hall, in the streets department. Because as a councilperson, that's what people want. They want great streets. They want safety in their neighborhood. And on the news yesterday, that woman mentioned the 12-year-old who was beaten up by a 15 and a 16-year-old and had to have emergency surgery. I mean, like, these are juveniles. Who does that? Like, people really need to raise as a community, as a village, we've got to get these children young. And I'm so thankful for the police department having a juvenile unit when they have not had some in some time. So hopefully, things will really start turning around.
Excuse me, Kathy, my timer didn't go off.
Oh, I have to? But I just want one more thing, is people will know what they want to know, and as a teacher, like, you can't food speed, spoon feed the parents. That information is out there, but you'll still have parents not show up to their parent-teacher conference. I think Mo and Ed would agree with me. You know, there's that information out there. You know, if we want it, it's on the website. It's on the media. Thanks.
Kathy? Is there any other public comment?
Good evening, Madam President, Council, Mayor. I did not register to speak on behalf of the chamber earlier, and I didn't expect to actually speak this evening, but I figure since I'm here, I will maximize the time. Curtis Jones, Director of Government Affairs, Erie Regional Chamber of Growth Partnership, that addresses 1128 State Street. Just want to take a few moments to applaud the work so far of the city guided and led by the administration, supported by city council around significant DEI work, not just talking about it. The old folks used to say, when I was coming up, stop talking about it and start being about it. And I think there is some of that happening now. A cautionary tale is to say that we've had numerous reports. I had the honor and privilege of serving on this council with some of you and with others who have moved on for 13 years. And we've gotten a lot of these kinds of reports that started out really well, but we did not fulfill or actualize or put into practice many of the recommendations. And so I'm looking forward to this not being another one of those cases. I also would share, from a regional chamber perspective, in lend our platform as an organization and an agency in this community, in the city, but also even beyond, to help, to be a conduit to getting the information out, to help being, to be a conduit to be able to say, okay, this is what the administration and council are doing through the city. How can other organizations, agencies, businesses, corporations, manufacturers get in the same ebb and flow and row in the same accelerated, hopefully, direction around DEI and inclusion in general of all sorts? We have one community with a beautiful array of diversity, and the more we celebrate that, I think the more we will grow. And, you know, I was in a financial class the other day, and they talked about one of the, one of the most significant things when you're talking about investing is diversifying your portfolio. And we all want a little bit more money. We all want to know how to manage our money better. Certain principles cross over from one area to the next. And so if the significance of diversifying works in the financial and economic realm, I absolutely know, and I think we all know intrinsically at least, that will help in the human service and in the service of building community the same way. Another note in relation to the chambers that we did last month have our annual homecoming event. Multiple council members and city officials were there. So we want to thank everyone in the city, everyone in the city administration and council that were supportive. Even if you weren't able to be there in person, you were supportive, sent people, recommended, spoke well of the event. And so we honor that. We appreciate that. As an organization, we had probably the most diverse attendance as far as racial equity, racial and ethnicity in that event. It was just really eclectic and a lot of fun, and from music to vendors to, again, a diversity of businesses and groups that were honored, celebrated, and participated in that event. So again, in any way that the Regional Chamber and Growth Partnership here in Erie can be a support to the administration, to this council, to move our community forward and allow that to be more than a campaign slogan and more than a cliche, but a reality of what we manifest together, we are available to do that. And I'm your liaison. I'm your contact directly, and I'm here to help you to serve in the capacities that you're serving. So thank you for the time, and if there's any questions, you all know how to reach me. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? There is Veronica's online. Does she? Veronica Rexford? She wasn't there a few minutes ago, but now somebody's there, so.
Just checking in to listen. Thank you. Ordinances for final passage. Council file number 16322, official ordinance 612022, and ordinance appropriating the sum of $200 from appropriated and anticipated revenue from donations made by Value Homes Center. Sponsored by Mr. Brzinski, seconded by Mr. Troop. The council file ordinance, bill number 16322, and now known as official file ordinance 612022, be finally passed by city council. Mr. Brzinski, Ms. Flores, Mr. Keys, Mr. Nelson, Mr. Troop, Mr. Witherspoon, Ms. Allen. Ordinances for first reading, council file number 16315, and ordinance fixing the tax rate for all city purposes for the fiscal year 2023, beginning January 1st, 2023, and ending on December 31st, 2023. Sponsored by Mr. Nelson, seconded by Mr. Keys, the council file number 16315, having been read, is hereby adopted on first reading by city council. Mr. Brzinski, Ms. Flores, Mr. Keys, Mr. Nelson, Mr. Troop, Mr. Witherspoon, Ms. Allen. City council read and adopt, council file ordinance number 16315 by yea seven nay zero on first reading. Council file number 16316, an ordinance of the city of Erie, county of Erie, and Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, adopting the general fund and certain other budgets for the fiscal year ending December 31st, 2023. Sponsored by Mr. Nelson, seconded by Mr. Keys, the council file ordinance number 16316, having been read, is hereby adopted on first reading by city council. Mr. Brzinski, Ms. Flores, Mr. Keys, Mr. Nelson, Mr. Troop, Mr. Witherspoon, Ms. Allen. City council read and adopt, council file ordinance number 16316 by yea seven nay zero on first reading. Council file number 16323, an ordinance amending the codified ordinances of the city of Erie, Part 9, Utilities and Public Service Code Title V, Sewers and Water Article 933, Sewer Rental, Section 93302A, sewer rates by increasing the meter quantity charge per 100 cubic feet per quarter for the first 70 CFs from 305 to 365, and the next 4,930 cubic feet from 291 to 347, and usage over 5,000 cubic feet from 271 to 325, and by increasing the large volume user charges per 100 cubic feet per month for the first 23 cubic feet from 305 to 365, and the next 1644 cubic feet from 291 to 347, and all other usage over 1,667 cubic feet from 271 to 325. Sponsored by Ms. Allen, seconded by Mr. Keys, the council file ordinance number 16323, having been read, is hereby adopted on first reading by city council. Mr. Brzinski.
No.
Ms. Flores. Mr. Keys.
No.
Mr. Nelson. Mr. Troop. Mr. Witherspoon.
No.
Council file, city council read and adopt, council file ordinance 16323 by yea's four, nays three on first reading.
Can I add something? I should have discussed this when we were talking about this at our, just for the public's information, we, I asked about delinquencies for refuse and sewer bills at our study session, and that information is publicly available. I believe that the total delinquent, I mean, it's come down considerably over the years, but there's still, I believe, 1.5 million.
That has not come down considerably over the years. Before COVID, it was staying between 500 and 700,000.
Okay. I'm just talking about when we first, when it was first made public years ago, I think it was like 6 million. So, yeah, I guess you're talking about the timeframe, but that's a lot of outstanding bills that, the names are on there of, you know, who owes money, and it would really be appreciated if people would make arrangements or start paying those bills because the rest of us end up...
There's, the reason I point out that it was before COVID is because they stopped turning off utilities. We gave this to the water authority to collect for us, and they can now turn off water for back sewage and garbage bills. They stopped doing it when COVID started, and now we have twice as many delinquent bills in the matter of these last couple of years. But there's a water authority meeting tomorrow.
Okay. Well, you'll keep us up on that next meeting. Thank you. Sorry, Lori.
If you collect the money, you can get rid of fee increases. Thank you.
Council file number 16324, an ordinance amending the codified ordinances of the city of Erie, Part 9, Utilities and Public Service Code Title VII, Other Public Services, Article 951, Residential Refuse, Section 95109, Garbage and Refuse Collection Fee, Increasing the Quarterly Collection Fee From $261 Per Year to $272.38 Per Year. The annual collection fee shall be assessed against each dwelling unit and billed on a quarterly basis. Bless you. Sponsored by Ms. Allen, seconded by Mr. Keys, the council file ordinance 16324, having been read, is hereby adopted on first reading by city council. Mr. Brzinski.
No.
Ms. Flores. Mr. Keys. Mr. Nelson. Mr. Troop. Mr. Witherspoon.
No.
Ms. Allen. Council file read and adopt, council file ordinance number 16324 by yea's four, nays three on first reading. This takes us to new business.
Do we have a motion to adopt the balance and then do separations?
Numbers one, two, and three.
Are there any other separations?
Transfers on the top of the back page, both of them.
We're talking 11,805,000?
No.
Okay, I'm only finding one. Same again? 717?
723.
Two separate.
Oh, they're on the same one.
Just do the last one.
The two. Okay.
That transfer would be separated.
Any other separations? Any other separations? Voting on moving the balance of the agenda, Mr. Brzinski, Ms. Flores, Mr. Keys.
Lori, do we need somebody to move, to move? Someone to actually move to move the balance?
Motion to move the balance.
Do we need a motion? Okay. Thank you.
I'd be into it.
Sorry.
Moving the balance of the agenda now. Mr. Brzinski, Ms. Flores, Mr. Keys, Mr. Nelson, Mr. Troop, Mr. Witherspoon, and Ms. Allen. We have resolution number one.
Lori, before we get started, I would like to rescind resolutions number one and number
Rescind?
Yeah.
Table? Okay, resolution number two. One and three. Number one and three. We're keeping number two or pulled from the agenda.
And number two, we would like to amend where the money's coming from and put it from the professional services.
Of city council? Resolution sponsored by Mr. Keys, seconded by Mr. Nelson, authorizing and directing the proper city officials, whereas city council has resolved to make improvements to Roger Young Park, whereas preliminary site design work is necessary to step, a necessary step to start the project, therefore be it resolved that Roth Mars Partnership will be contracted to provide these services for $7,500 through the city council professional services budget. Discussion?
Well, I wanted to discuss what I asked about in the caucus. I asked how Mr. Keys decided that Roth Mars is the appropriate architectural firm to do this. I asked if Roth Mars has expertise in park planning. I asked how many architectural firms there are in Erie, and I think I found at least probably a dozen. I know there's a couple that are well-known and often get, you know, projects that we can see the results from. And Mr. Keys told me that this is about designing a track, and that doesn't say that here. It just, the resolution says improvements to Roger Young Park. So when I asked what kind of expertise Roth Mars had, he said the Cathedral Prep Athletic Center. I have many, many concerns about the whole process that has, I'm going to say, is not on... not on track properly to make sure that we, we get a really good project at Roger Young Park. So, as we were hearing the DEI report, I was, went and did a little bit of research about the Villa and Prep Events Center, and it turns out that the athletic field and main entrance opened in 2010 at a cost of $9 million. Then there was construction of 11.5 million expansion in 2014. So that's a $20 million facility. Now, obviously, that also includes, you know, there's a, there's a enclosed pool there. I think there's a basketball. But, but the initial thing, before you even had that enclosed pool and the basketball courts, was $9 million. So, potentially to have a really Class A track, are we looking at a $9 million track for Roger Young Park? Possibly.
Madam President?
Possibly, but that could maybe happen if we have partnerships, or if we actually talk to the school district about what they want to do with the track. So, I think that, I had no idea that the Prep Events Center costs that much. I mean, I know that that's a private thing and they have a lot of money, but that's a lot of money that we might be looking at from the people who, I guess, designed the Prep Events Center. So, and I haven't verified if they did it.
Madam President, if I may, I spent a number of years at Erie School District, 12, on the school board, and I was fortunate enough to see Mr. Mars at his best. We've had new schools, we've had a track over, now East Middle School, he's done a lot. If you don't like the 7,500, it's one thing, but attacking the professional that Mike picked out, I don't think that's the right thing to do.
I'm not attacking the professional. I'm asking if he did due diligence and sought out other RFPs from other architectural firms. But I will say that Roth Mars, that we know that there's a habit in school districts. Mill Creek always had its favorite firm, and Roth Mars always got all the school district work. And I know how that happened, and I'm not going to say it here, but you know how it happened, and I know how it happened. I used to cover the school board. It involved a golf trip to North Carolina.
I must have missed that one.
I don't think you were on the school board, then.
Once again, we're attacking, yeah, we're attacking.
No, I'm not attacking.
Mike, do you golf?
I don't understand why we would have someone who is good-hearted and has the right heart and commitment to try and improve Roger Young Park, but is not an expert on park planning, on his own, go out and get a contract from an architectural firm.
Maybe he was a blind squirrel that found the acorn. He got all the good outfit that he's working with.
Maybe.
Maybe. Call for the vote.
Call for the vote, Lori.
Mr. Brzezinski?
Yes.
Ms. Flores? Mr. Keys?
Yes.
Mr. Nelson?
Yes.
Mr. Troop? Mr. Witherspoon?
Yes.
Ms. Allen?
No.
Resolution passes, yays six, nays one. We're looking at a transfer sponsored by Mr. Witherspoon, seconded by Mr. Keys, from the Department of Planning and Neighborhood Resources. The following amounts be transferred. From 496,850 from Parks and Public Spaces to Tree Improvement Project, and 220,873 Parks and Public Spaces to Curb Cuts Planning, for a total of $717,723.
So, so I pulled two other resolutions from the agenda, but if you can see my concern, these transfers for curb cuts and tree planting are coming out of the parks budget. And so, the parks budget that was at 5 million is now roughly at 4.1 million. And the question I asked was, were we cutting curbs around the parks? And the question were no. Were we removing and mitigating trees in the parks? And the question, answer was no. And so, I object, one, to this coming out of the parks budget, and two, I, you know, I just find it, it's hard that this falls with, even in ARP guidelines of uplifting the disenfranchised and the marginalized people. I see the very last thing that somebody who heard in our city saying, would you please cut down my tree?
Madam President, if I may, probably was never a better day to have this presented to us than tonight. She talks so much about diversity, she talks so much about cohesiveness, people letting, working together and knowing what everybody's doing. I don't blame Michael for being upset about this. I'm 100% with him for that track over at Roger Young. The kids deserve that. The older folks here have to walk the thing. But anyway, the bottom line is, we get surprised, and we need the people upstairs to include us in this rather than drop it on our heads.
Ed, we did have a whole discussion about this stuff.
You may have had it, and you interrupted me.
It was at a council meeting. We talked about, why is one of the contracting people from Ripley, we talked about this. Renee is not here tonight because she was in a car accident, but we did talk about this.
May I remind you that you were city council president and not part of administration upstairs?
I, I know, but you just said you didn't know about it, and we talked about it, but...
I used the wrong terminology.
Do you want Renee to come on the line?
I'm wrong about that. What I'm saying is that we do see a lot of money coming toward us at the last minute, and then we have to figure, figure out why. Just, sure, go ahead.
If I can explain, so, the $717,000 isn't the only money that has come out of the parks money. Earlier in the years, some other money has come out of there also for awarding contract to curb cuts and for tree removal. And so, that's what was the discussion. The broader discussion did not go to how much more money would be going to these two line items.
I guess the question too is, is this bucket money? Or is this money that's already spent that we have to pay people for?
Yes, let me, let me answer that. It's on the ARP website, it has funding allocations for park and public spaces. They're considering this, the public spaces issue of it. So with that, they have 600 that they had allocated for the removal of dead trees in public right-of-ways, so that's what they're calling public space. And then the 370,000 for ADA curb ramps. There's a, there's, the city's holding some liabilities with some of those trees in the public right-of-ways. This is something that's a lot of deferred maintenance that, I'm not even sure if I'm, how much I'm supposed to say of that kind of thing, of the liability aspect of it, but this is an opportunity for us to get ahead on deferred maintenance, and as the bucket was set, it was parks and public spaces. This is what they asked for of the public spaces part. This, it's, it's fitting the bucket, which, I mean, I'd, I'd heard when Mike brought this up the first time, I went, talked to Public Works about it, and I'm comfortable with it as the liaison and the information available. It's going to be spent right now, but it, but it was in that bucket, it's on the website, it's been advertised to us for a year.
I realize that.
So, yeah, so I, you know, when we put $5 million in for the parks, it was supposed to go to the parks. They come up with the matrix of how they're spending it, and so, I'm still not a fan of it. I don't believe that it's a good use of ARP money. When I had a tree issue at my property where it bucked the sidewalks and everything, the city told me it was my responsibility. And so, I don't know why we would now default back and decide to spend nearly three-quarters of a million dollars for, for the project that, well, at least the legal ruling was in my case, that it was my problem, not, not the city's problem if the tree was in my right-of-way.
Any other discussion? Voting on the resolution, Mr. Brzezinski, Ms. Flores, Mr. Keys?
No.
Mr. Nelson? Mr. Troop? Mr. Witherspoon? Ms. Allen? Resolution passes, yays six, nays one.
Is that bringing us to committee reports?
I believe.
Okay. Ed?
Sure. All the work's going to begin now. I always go on record as saying no fee increases. I hope the administration will bring that to us without those two fee increases. If not, I will advocate cuts from budget that I can find. If we can already take 900,000 out of the sewer and garbage funds in this budget, that's means I only need to get, what, another 900,000? The money's there, that's all I'm saying. Hopefully, we can, you know, come to grips with it. I, I don't agree with those fee increases, and I guess I never will. That's about all I have to say about that. Other than that, have a happy, happy Thanksgiving, and a safe time with your family. Hopefully, we're going to go to Minnesota, just happens to be at a New England Patriot game that night, too. But we, with my oldest son and his family. So, everyone, if you please be safe and have a wonderful, wonderful holiday.
I had a meeting with the Blighted Property Committee, and they moved a few, I think four, maybe five properties to the blighted property list. There's a few, there's over 200 that are still under review. I have a committee meeting for the EMTA on Tuesday, but things have been looking really good with our EMTA, and I know that Dave Robinson is doing his work among all community members to make sure that the access to the transportation is benefiting every employee in our community, to make sure that you can get to and from work. So hopefully, within the next coming of the new year, we could start getting some of these schedule needs that workers who use the bus can actually start making it to and from work, especially on Sundays. I know a lot of people have been talking about Sunday services. But that's all I have to report.
Good evening. I attended the airport authority meeting today. Our airport is still going through some hiccups, but they said that their budget is favorable, and I guess that's the most important thing, that, you know, recovering from COVID and being, being solvent, and so, that's a good report.
Madam President, I have no report today.
No report.
I, I got one. I did some stuff. Come on, Mel. Yesterday, and Mike should have taken credit for this because he's the chair of the committee, but the Economic Development Committee got together, so Mike and Mo and myself got together with the new director of planning. We discussed a vacancy and foreclosure registration so that the city can hopefully capture some of those houses upstream before Jasmine and her Blighted Property Committee starts sending them to blight and to demolition. So that's the, that was, that was yesterday. I was really excited. It was our first, like, functional committee meeting since we set up this structure. And Ed was there, too. I don't mean to leave you out. And then, yesterday was also sewer authority meeting. Nothing particularly, they're, they're moving on, they're doing a great job again, grant money, and things are continuing to improve. So, that's it for my committee report.
I don't have a committee report, but I am going to ask, Curtis Jones, can you come back up to the podium and just explain about the meeting that you had on Monday? Because that's relevant to council, the meeting that I, I came to, where you brought together a group of young professionals to talk about boards and authorities.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you for that opportunity, for this opportunity. So we, since I was on council, it's been a challenge to, to consistently and effectively diversify the boards and authorities, the commissions in the city. And often, there's a question of, well, who, who of a diverse hue is available? Who do we, we don't know, who we don't know? And so, we had the idea, and I utilized my space in the chamber, to reach out to Council President Allen, as well as Michael Outlaw from the administration, and went through, started going through my rolodex of folks, young professionals, black and brown, younger, Hispanic, and that, we're not limited there, but those, that was the, you know, the first group. And we had about 15, well, 13 people in the room, and multiple others who could not make it but are very interested in serving on boards, authorities, and commissions of the city. So a few of them have and/or will, very shortly, submit applications to serve in whatever vacancies are available now, and also moving forward in the future. And the follow-up to that is, we're collecting and developing a database of those individuals. So if, for example, Mr. Nelson has a question, like, okay, I have an appointment, I don't really know anyone, I want to, here's a certain skill set, but they're also, you know, meet a diversity component, well, here's a list of 12 people that have that skill set and meet, you know, a few other criteria that we would want to use to diversify. So, anyway, we're doing those. That was the first one. We have multiple that we're going to, to, to facilitate and bring together. So, we worked, want to work together with the city, with the administration in any way possible. Again, that's another one of those examples with the chamber, working with the administration and council to, to be intentional about the DEI work.
And I think, Curtis, one of the things you stressed was the relative young component of people there. That was so good to see people who are ready to step up and, and be, be leaders, so.
Yeah, so I was there as like the old guy. I don't know when that happened, Mayor. It shifted from being the gray-haired gentleman in, in the room. But, but yeah, the majority of the folks in the room were under 40, and they were all either, either business owners or are working in corporate areas in our community and want to serve. And if I can take a point of privilege very quickly, is to say that these are professional people who want to do professional work in our community, and I think it's important that we give them an opportunity to do that, and that we also continue to model that ourselves as professional as, and that's not a criticism, I'm just saying in general, like, continue to model that for them, whether it be elected or appointed positions. I think it's really important that we are intentional about doing that, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, and then, Ed? Teresa, she's not on.
She texted no report.
No report, okay.
I've spoken up today. I have nothing.
I've probably spoken too much, too, but I'm going to say just a couple of words. One is on those fee increases that are proposed, I really think we need those. We look, we worked hard on the budget this year. From what we originally got from the departments, we cut about 3 million because there was just too much unaccounted for. I don't know where else we can cut, so you guys are going to have to try to figure that out and do it right if you want to cut those out. I'm concerned about what might happen, though, if you do. I think it's going to cause real problems for sewer and refuse. I don't know how they'll handle that, but I would, I would ask that you pass what we requested, and I would like to start actually raising those every year. We've talked about that, and all of you heard it, but we've talked about that for a couple of years now, because I, I think that's important that we do it, that we do it. I think, I wanted to just comment briefly on Strategic Consulting Partners and Monica Gould, being here today with Heather Stevens, and thank you for the time you spent with, with them, understanding what they're doing. And as soon as we have the final version, we'll get that to you for approval, and we welcome any input or any questions, any of you have on that as well. I met today with a group called Cadet Arts and Entertainment Incorporated. They work out of Altoona, or, excuse me, Allentown, PA right now, and what they do is they take, I think they're high school graduates. I learned a lot, we spent about an hour and a half with them this morning, and basically, they, they take kids that, that are pretty good at playing musical instruments, and they put them into groups, they go to the town where, where they train, and they're from all over the world, actually, not even just from the United States, but these kids are from all over the world, and I think they have close to a couple hundred of them that participate in this. They go to a city for five weeks to train, learn some programs, and then they go around the country, mostly this side of the Mississippi River, but go around the country and do like 55 shows around the country through, through the summer. So they're thinking of coming to Erie, and they came, there were eight of them today that came and talked to us about it, and it was, it was pretty exciting. They're gonna need some financial support, which we didn't get into any detail about, can we do that, or how, how can we do it, or that sort of thing. But it was, it was a real good first meeting, they went and talked with, with some other, they spent the day here in Erie, going around, talking to people. And as soon as we get more information about that, I'll definitely be sharing it with you, and you can help us decide, you know, what the best thing to do is. With regard to Roger Young Park, I just wanted to comment on that briefly, and I really appreciate, you know, we, we did an extensive survey of, of how to use that, that funding within about, there's about 20 parks in, in the area where we can use it. And basically, that's, that's the area where people live in Erie where they're, you know, they're not rich, they're, you know, they're struggling to get by maybe, and we did a survey, which we're putting the results together from that now, we got a lot of, from the people that live in all these communities. And I would really appreciate it if, if, if you could stop moving forward on something like this until we get the survey results, show them to you, and then together, we can decide what's the best way for us to spend this money. So, I think that's everything I've got. Thanks very much.
Madam President, Mayor, the next time you're in conversation with the cadets, would you tie Councilman Troop into that, please? He's not gonna speak on it.
Is that okay with Councilman Troop?
You talk, you talk music, he's the man.
Okay. Glad to have you there, Mel, if, yeah, thanks.
I, I did have one other thing, I wanna remind council that we have a study session tomorrow night with the Department of Community and Economic Development about the Home American Rescue Plan funding. The city has $2.9 million to address individuals or households who are homeless or at risk of homelessness, so that's tomorrow at 5:30.
That reminds me, I put in my notes, and I got mixed up with his Dido thing, tonight's the first night of Our Neighbor's Place. So, that's the Overflow Shelter. Tonight's the first night of it runs through the winter, hosted by various churches downtown. Needs a lot of volunteers coming out of COVID.
Okay, and how do, how do you get to be a volunteer for that? What's the best way to get involved in that if you're, do you contact the individual congregations or the...
Erie United Methodist Alliance is the overarching entity for that.
Okay. Did everybody hear that? Erie United Methodist Alliance?
Yeah.
Is, and what a good night, I mean, sadly, but what a good night to make sure that it's available on, as we're getting our first taste of winter. Okay, is there anything else?
Madam President, make sure you tell Renee that Mr. Nelson and I wore our blue a day ahead of time, but we did it.
I, I, I definitely will, so, nothing else for the good of the order?
City Council adjourns at 8:43 PM. Ms. Allen, Mr. Brzezinski, Ms. Flores, Mr. Keys, Mr. Nelson, Mr. Troop, Mr. Witherspoon.